Make a motion to amend the agenda, please.
Sure.
I would like to postpone until next month under the presentations and reports, the council member liaison reports.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Do I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda with the exception of item number one under section E? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item will be the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the consent agenda is very straightforward this month. We have the adoption of the minutes from the previous meetings, as well as one appointment to the party or anybody's advice from the committee.
Okay, anybody have any question about any item? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item, public comment. Were the publics invited to speak? And you have three minutes. Do we have anyone who... The public who wishes to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Last time, anyone wish to speak? Okay, next item, presentation and reports. Shannon, town manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so manager's report will be brief this month. We typically report on contracts and purchase orders that were approved in the last month. The only contract that has come in, and you have a red line copy at your seats, is the contract for the town hall needs and feasibility study. This is with our consultants LS3P and their design partners, design team partners. Contract amounts for $140,000 per the town's adopted policy. Any contracts over $90,000 need to come before the board for approval. So, this does meet the town's budget. Staff's reviewed the proposal and we're comfortable with it, so it's before you for a vote.
This is now within the amount that we have budgeted for this? Okay.
It is. Also, the effect of the reduction in the overall budget is that it does reduce the timeframe a little bit, too, which had been another concern. So, this, I think, is more in keeping with what we were anticipating.
Shannon, was there any other people? Give us a bid or anything for this?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Was there any other companies or...
We went through a selection process. We posted an RFQ, and we had a number of people respond. We formed a steering committee or a selection committee that reviewed the applications and decided to interview three different teams, and this was the preferred consultant.
Okay, then we're ready to approve them.
If you don't mind, and then I can go on and do some more.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this contract?
Move to approve the town hall needs and feasibility study with LS3P.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, so moving on to the rest of the report, there were just a few other things I wanted to report on. One was, there's been some question about the best way we could take advantage of new technological improvements to inform our citizenry about interesting things or things that they may be interested happening within the town. We had, last year, reviewing options that were available, we decided to go with a company called GoGov that pushed notifications through an app, but it required that you download an app and sign up, and we found that it was very little used. It was an inexpensive contract, but nevertheless, the user, or how many people were taking advantage of it, was very low. We didn't think it was worth it. So, we canceled that contract. And in this intervening year, we've learned now that our website provider has expanded options to their notification process that now allows text messaging. And that's really what we were looking for, was a way for people to be able to receive messages via text. So, we now have expanded the options through the website. People can go in and sign up, and then you can opt for email, or text, or both. And there's a number of categories, and I'm going to kind of show you kind of what it looks like. So, first, you go to the town's homepage. You see that button, sign up for alerts. You click on that, and it takes you to this e-notify page. Here's where you create your account, if you don't have one already, or you sign into your account. And then, it kind of gives you some instructions and prompts you to pick any of these different categories, and then you can choose to be emailed or receive a text message. And it also tells you what webpage you would find this information on. So, I signed up for this this afternoon, and we had to update our slides, and so your agenda or materials, meeting materials got updated, and I received that text message that told me to click here to see the updates, so it's working. This doesn't show you all the categories. It just shows you the meeting agenda and minutes category, alerts, which are, you know, if there's road closures, or town halls closed due to a snow event, that sort of thing. Those are those kind of messages. We also have a newsletter category that people can sign up for and receive the newsletter via email, and we may add things in the future as well. So, we're excited about that. I am also asked staff to consider changing their signatures to kind of help get the word out. So, in addition to our normal broadcast announcements, we're asking staff to, you know, put on their signature line, please sign up. You could click here to sign up for news and alerts using our new system. So, we hope that that will result in better communication. Moving on, some other departmental updates. In stormwater, of course, we have our inventory and assessment process underway. We hope to wrap that up at the end of the month. We also will be now, we are now, I should say, reviewing applications for stormwater. So, that has now been successfully transferred from Buncombe County to the town, so any new applications moving forward that require stormwater review is going to come to us. We have one application already, and we imagine we'll get a few more here in the next month or so. For parks, the work is ongoing. We will be developing an RFQ for the restrooms in Silverline Park. That's going to include a small design contract that will sort of look at citing, optimal citing for pickleball, probably, look at any circulation changes that need to occur, whether or not we need to revise the constructed wetland, things like that. So, that'll be a small design project, primarily focused on getting the restrooms. That's really the only thing we have budgeted for next year is the restroom. So, that's what, that'll be the main focus of that work. And then, of course, we're in the permitting phase right now for Riverside and Taylor's Wave. And I had notified council previously through a regular update that we did receive some positive news from Norfolk Southern, that they signed the agreement to conduct the construction easement review, so we're not sure how long that will take, but we're optimistic, and Adrian's going to check in with them periodically to make sure that we haven't been forgotten, so. And then, for public works, we had our spring cleanup week. We did not see as high a participation in the spring cleanup as we have in years past. We're not really sure why. We did all the same notification, short of this new email and text messaging option, but all of our standard advertising, we followed, and it was just not a very robust session this year. The salt shed bids are due by the end of the month, so we hope to be able to report on that here soon and get that construction project moving forward. Updates in the planning department, of course, the comprehensive plan work is ongoing, and the planning board and board of adjustment merger, which we'll be discussing later on in the agenda, so I'm not going to go into detail on that one right now. And then, the last thing was, we are now in a good position with a few of our work items off the plate. We're now looking and shifting our focus to short-term rental permitting and enforcement. We have been doing some of that, but we're kind of gearing up to kind of look at it more intensely in the coming months. And just to give you a little bit of update and kind of recap, we adopted standards to better regulate short-term rentals and home stays back in November of 2022. We contracted with Granicus, also known as Host Compliance. It's a third-party software consultant company that creates a database that helps towns or municipalities monitor and kind of keep track of short-term rental activity. So, we contracted with them in December. It takes them 60 to 90 days or so to pull a database together. So, they basically create a database of all of the rentals in town, and they track information about the rentals, and that's primarily what we use to kind of keep track from an enforcement and regulation standpoint. So, we get regular updates from short-term rent, or from Host Compliance, and it's a dynamic system. So, any day that you go in there, the data's going to change because new listings are being added, old listings are being taken off. Somebody may have gotten a permit, which changes their status, so this is a very dynamic system. So, as of yesterday, the town has 214 short-term rentals that are currently advertising. Now, when you look at the data, at the dashboard, it includes total listings, and that's a little bit confusing because that's, that can be, one short-term rental can have multiple listing platforms. They might advertise on Airbnb, they might advertise on HomeAway, they might advertise on any Expedia, any number of other sites. So, many have more than one. So, we don't, we kind of ignore the total listings number, and we just look at the number of short-term rentals that are currently advertising, the discrete unit. That's what we're really counting. So, as of yesterday, we had 214. We know four of those were new, just added in the last week or so. Five are long-term listings, and we know that we have about, I think, fewer than 10 home stay permits. That 214 includes home stays. So, the real number of short-term rentals is probably around 200, maybe even a little fewer, and that's what we're in the process of working through. We have 93% of all of those listings are identified, and so now, we need to go back and look and see how many of those are lawful, are located in places that could allow a short-term rental and could get a permit, in which case, we just want to kind of nudge them to get that permit. How many may have been established before the ordinance was adopted and are grandfathered, and we'll document those in a different manner. So, we anticipate that the numbers are going to change, but generally speaking, the system is doing exactly what we hoped it would do, which was give us the information that we needed. This is a typical map that you'll see on any given day. The legend identifies compliant, so those are probably, most of the time, those are going to be home stays or other grandfathered that we've documented, short-term rentals. Non-compliant, I wouldn't get too worried about the number of red dots there. We anticipate a lot of those are grandfathered, and we just need to get their status changed. So, we communicate with Host Compliance every time somebody gets permitted, every time we do a zoning determination that says this is a grandfathered unit, that'll change that red dot to a green dot. So, that's kind of what our focus is right now. Not yet identified is another one we look for. You can see there's about five or six of those little yellow triangles. Just as of yesterday, we were kind of curious, like, who those units are, or where are they? And so, we were looking at them, and Ricky was quickly able to identify three of the five or six. So, we anticipate that we'll get close to 100% identification, which, that's really good for Host Compliance and for the town. So, that's the first step in trying to get everybody conforming, is identifying the properties and making contact. I thought this was an interesting graph, too, that was, that is provided. They look at the total number of listings. Again, we don't really worry about the total listings. We look at the actual short-term rental listings, which is really that green line. So, you can see I've added a line to mark approximately when standards were adopted, and you can see, you know, as we do some enforcement, as we clarify, like, the numbers are dropping. Now, some of that is probably due, it's seasonal, too, to some degree, but I also think that's also the result of some of our enforcement. So, we expect that that line will, it'll always kind of bump up and down, but we expect it to more or less flatten out. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
I think you got a question from Walt back here.
Is the information on the short-term rentals available to the public?
It is not. I mean, the database is a proprietary database, so we don't share the data. We share, we can provide reporting metrics, but otherwise, you have to have a login, a secure login, to use it.
Recently, a neighbor said that there had been some unusual activity to the adjoining house, and they wondered how they would find out if it was being operated in short-term rentals.
Just call us. Yeah, and we can look up, and if there's a permit on file, we can share any of that information, and if not, then we might initiate enforcement actions.
I think that they were a little reluctant to rat out somebody that lives so close.
We do take complaints, really, all of our zoning complaints, we allow people to do it anonymously, so if they're worried about that, we don't have to create a record with them.
Any other questions for Shannon? Okay.
So, I'm going to turn it over to Sheri now to walk you through the budget.
Okay, presentation of the proposed budget.
Okay, first, I want to thank the council and Shannon and all the department heads. This is, for all your perseverance, this has been a process over the last three months. You all attended a full-day retreat, and then three budget work sessions, and we used a lot of your feedback, and your attendance was very valuable in helping us compile the budget that is presented to you to review tonight. So, the schedule, we'll present the proposed budget for the board's consideration tonight. We'll announce the public hearing at your next meeting, and then we'll hold the public hearing. The board will be able to have a discussion and make any amendments you would like to make, and then we'll ask that you vote on next year's fiscal budget at your June meeting. So, to get us started, the recommended budget for fiscal year 2024 will amount to $7,673,146. That number's a little below last year's adopted budget number, because we had a substantial amount of fund balance appropriated last year, if you remember, at the beginning of the year, as a result of our ARP funds that we used to complete some one-time projects and capital purchases and things like that. And we'll go over some of those accomplishments as we go through the slides. Look, it's the next slide. So, we used some of those funds to, we budgeted and hired a new stormwater administrator to help administer the town's required MS4 stormwater permit. We devoted a lot of staff resources to completing our inventory and adopting the stormwater ordinance that you all adopted a few months ago to help us comply with this mandatory federal program. And we're looking at establishing a stormwater utility effective in the next fiscal year to help us maintain and comply with all the stormwater requirements. We completed most of the $3 million street project, partially or fully or partially paving over, well, 20 streets, and then we have five more that we weren't able to get to, that we have budgeted for next fiscal year to complete and close out that project. Shannon gave you an update on the Blue Way-Green Way project, so I won't spend much time on that. In addition to the status report she mentioned earlier, we demolished the Silverline Building at that park and are looking forward to adding public restrooms in the next fiscal year to that facility. The, we all know many of our town facilities are aging like this town hall, and we, as she announced earlier, will be proceeding with our feasibility study and hope to have that completed in mid-2024, in the next fiscal year. That was fully funded in this year, and we look forward to the information they'll bring us as a result of that study. The salt shed plans are complete, and we're soliciting bids for construction there. The comprehensive plan is underway, and we are awaiting the feedback from that exercise and look for guidance from the decisions that'll be made through that report to help us as we move forward. The planning and zoning department has been busy this year updating ordinances and helping provide more consistent development initiatives. As you all are aware, that was a big priority for many of the members of this council, so I think they are well underway there. We have consolidated our boards to create a planning board of adjustment. You'll hear more about that a little later tonight. And sanitation, we, for the first time, provided all of our residents, residential and small commercial residents, with the large 95-gallon rollout carts for both services, and are still providing that as part of our tax rate with no additional charge to the residents. So, we are happy about that. That provides a lot safer environments for our public work staff and more efficiency in the way we collect our sanitation. General fund revenues, you know, this slide shows our progress over the last five years. These have almost doubled in the last five years, but if you look at 2020, we were at $4,775 in total general fund revenue, and the proposed budget before you for 2024 is $7,673,000. So, Woodfin has grown quite a bit in the last five years, and we are fortunate to be able to fund most of the needs of the town as we grow with it. So, the major revenue sources, property tax, of course, is our largest revenue source. We are not recommending, staff is not recommending an increase in the tax rate. We're currently at 33 cents per $100. And just so that you know, that at the current assessed value in Woodfin, if we raise taxes a penny, we generate about $119,000 for every penny. We provided some slides in one of the work sessions that showed what all of our sister municipalities close by charge, and we're about in the middle between Buncombe County, Asheville, and the other municipalities here locally. We'll collect a little over $4 million in ad valorem taxes next fiscal year at the current tax rate. As an example, our residents in Woodfin not only pay Woodfin tax, they also pay Buncombe County ad valorem taxes and Woodfin fire taxes. There are several different fire districts. Some are in, most of our folks are in the Woodfin Fire District. We have some that are in Rims Creek, some that are in Ashville, but most of our folks are at a combined tax rate of 92.39%. If you look at the average assessed value of a residential property in Woodfin, planning department tells me that number for residences is about $318,000 today. If you look at the sales over the last year, the average homes in Woodfin sold at between 406 and 426, so a little over $400,000. We have a lot of older residences that haven't turned over in a good while. But for the sake of an example of what folks will pay for ad valorem taxes that live in Woodfin, if your home is assessed at $300,000 and you don't have any exemptions, you would pay about $1,464 in Buncombe County tax. The town of Woodfin, you'd pay $990, and then the Fire District would be an additional $317 for a total of $2771. So, that's the total tax assessment for an average home in Woodfin. Our next most significant revenue is sales tax, and you'll see, sales tax has also grown with the town as our population increases, and inflation also increases the overall level of cost of goods. Sales tax has also increased significantly, almost $1 million over the last six years. So, that's our second-largest revenue source for the town. Overall, general fund revenue budget, as I mentioned, was $7,673,000. We'll ask you, through the budget ordinance that you received with your packet, to adopt the budget by revenue source, and this is a summary of what all of our revenue categories Moving over to expenditures, our budget operating level, you'll see, in 2024 went down slightly, and that was due to, as I mentioned before, several of the one-time projects. We bought sanitation trucks and the garbage cans and spent some money on some park amenities and things that were one-time expansion items in last year's budget. The total dollar value for that stuff was about $1,500,000. So, although we're showing a slight operating decrease, it's really a little bit of an increase, and I'll go over what those expansion items that we discussed at your last budget work session are. So, our base budget was $6,955,400, and that darker green section represents the expansion budget. Some of that's one-time items, and some is, we'll actually increase the level of our overall budget. Oops, wrong way. The expansion budget, that's $717. It was the darker shaded green. Came from the following items, our street improvement and Powell Bill money will be used to fund the final five streets of the paving project. We'll also contribute $31,000 from the general fund to help complete the roads there. Parks and greenways, we are sending another $100,000 over to help pay for the cost of the, the estimated cost of the restroom at Silverline Park. That, we're required to put a restroom, a permanent restroom at that facility, and we're hoping that that will supply enough to get the job done. We are also budgeting $300,000 towards the town hall renovation project. That'll begin to, once the decisions are made on where and exactly what we're going to build, start to fund the engineering and design work we anticipate in the latter part of next fiscal year. The items in green at the bottom under the staff category will all represent recurring items. We are asking to add one position to the town staff, a police captain's position. The total cost of that, including all the benefits, is $104,000 a year. We are adding on-call pay and tuition reimbursement to the budget. We currently don't pay detectives and supervisory staff at the police department who have to come in at night on a moment's notice and for serious events that have happened in the town. We are recommending a cost-of-living adjustment for all full-time staff, 4% for exempt staff, and 6% for all of our hourly staff. The total cost for that over the course of the entire year will be $152,000. We're adding an excellence in service program so that employees can be nominated by coworkers or by you all, members of the public, for exemplary service above and beyond their normal job requirements, and we're hoping to incorporate that in our budget next year. The, of the $717,000 in expansion items, 431 are one-time expenditures for the capital items that we mentioned, and then 286,000 will be for recurring items, additional staff, and related costs. So, to summarize the general fund expenditures by department, I've included information showing what our projected budget is for this 2023 year, and then what our base and expansion budget is for next year to bring us to the total expenditure budget, which balances against your revenues of $7,673,146. All the items that we discussed in the expansion budget are in the 2024 expansion column there by department. For those of us that are more visual folks, I've included this graph that shows what, where our money is being spent. where our money is being spent. Public safety is our largest expenditure in the purple, followed by administration and public works services. So, that just kind of gives you another perspective on how the town is spending its money. So, in summary, again, you have a sample budget ordinance before you in your packet and a budget submittal letter from Shannon that explains in detail all the things that we went over tonight and the requests that are being made. And then, it'll be up to you all to, we went into a lot more detail at our budget work session, so hopefully we've answered most of the questions. But if there's any other additional information we can provide, be happy to do that. In addition to the general fund budget, we have three additional separate funds, two are capital project funds and one new enterprise fund. The first capital project fund is the Parks and Greenway Fund. We currently have an adopted budget. These capital project funds are multi-year budgets that generally capital projects span the course of more than one fiscal year, so once they're adopted, they can roll over from year to year. We haven't revised this budget since July of last year, so we are proposing that we bring the Greenway budget more in line with the expenditures that we, that match the current cost estimates. You all saw a detailed presentation from Adrian and Eric Hardy at your April work session, and they went over why the costs have changed the way that they have. This represents what we estimate Woodfin's portion of the cost for that project is today. So, we've included that in the budget ordinance for updating in next fiscal year. The next fund is the Streets Capital Project Fund. As I mentioned, we have a handful of streets that we plan to complete early next fiscal year, and then we'll close out this fund. We're adding the $31,000 that I mentioned in the expansion budget as a general fund transfer will be the only amendment to this fund budget. So, we'll be at a total of $3,077, if approved as proposed, for the Streets Capital Project budget. The Stormwater Enterprise Fund budget will be a new fund we'll be asking you to create by ordinance at the next meeting along with, in conjunction with the budget. Establishing a Stormwater Enterprise Fund allows us to operate the Stormwater Utility as a standalone, on a standalone set of books, and it'll be supported by the Stormwater Fee from residents. And Adrian went through at the last meeting presentation on exactly how the fee would be constructed, and we plan to make that effective next fiscal year and send out bills in, I think, the end of August, early September. So, this will also be part of the budget ordinance, and we'll ask you to establish this budget along with the general fund and capital project funds. It is, I should mention, it's net of the, we're estimating this at an 85% collection rate because we'll be doing a direct billing. This is a new charge, and we can't lien property like we, like if it were property taxes. So, we're estimating an 85-cent collection rate and based our budget on that amount. And finally, as an addendum to the budget ordinance, you'll find the new proposed fees for the town. That's something that's required to be adopted every year with the budget. The changes that we went over at the last budget workshop are summarized here. We've added, or updated a few of the fees for the Planning and Zoning Department to include a stormwater review fee and several other fees that we don't currently have on the books, and the Stormwater Utility Fund rates were also added to the fee, the list of fees that are attached to the budget. And finally, the public hearing for the 2023-24 budget, we're inviting the public to attend Woodfin's Town Council Meeting on June 20th at 5:00. That should say 5:00. It is at 5:00. It will say that in a second. It'll be held in this room, and the public's invited to speak about anything they'd like to talk about in reference to the budget. Any questions? Anyone? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. First item is a public hearing. Well, the next three items are public hearings. But anyway, Shannon, you want to start with the first one?
Yep, I'll get things kicked off. So, this first public hearing is a request for a voluntary annexation for 96.15 acres located on Elk Mountain, Scenic Highway, and Monday Cove Road. It's three parcels. Just to kind of let folks know a little bit about a voluntary annexation process, this is a process that's established by the North Carolina General Statute. So, if a property owner wishes to join the town's corporate limits, there's a process to do so. They file a petition initially. We received a petition for this request in February of, it says 2023. Yes, it was February this year. Then, we review that application to make sure we, it's called determining sufficiency. So, is it a complete application or a complete petition? Does it have all the information we need? And does it meet the statutory standard? This one's a little bit unusual in that it's what we call a satellite annexation. So, it's an annexation or it's property that is not directly contiguous to the town limits. This is contemplated and permitted in the statutes. The only catch is that if that property is located closer to another municipality, you have to get an agreement from that other municipality that it's okay for you to proceed. So, we did receive those agreements from the Town of Weaverville as well as the City of Asheville. Those were both done in April of this year. We, the next step then is to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing. We did that at council's last meeting on April 18th. The public hearing is this evening. And then, once, should the council vote to accept the annexation, then we have 60 days to assign a zoning designation. There's another, the very next public hearing is going to actually go ahead and assign that zoning designation for the council's consideration. So, here are the properties. You can see it's a very large undeveloped tract of land. The larger of the two parcels, I think, is 92, 93 acre, excuse me, the larger of the three parcels is, I think, somewhere in 92, 93 acres. And then, you see those two small little parcels that round out the overall property. The same property owner, the same petitioner is, has voluntarily annexed the property to the south, which is, you know, approximately 100 acres also. And the intent is to combine these parcels for an expansion of a resort development. That's not necessarily anything we take into consideration as part of an annexation, but just letting you know because that's going to be the next application. We also review properties for the town's ability to provide services, and so that's something that we do with all annexations. In this particular case, the main service that we'll be providing is police, public safety. The other services, because it's a commercial development, wouldn't, more than likely apply. So, if council is supportive of this request, we have a suggested motion for your consideration. That motion refers to the other legal documents in your packet, including the Exhibit A, which is the boundary survey for the property, as well as the legal description that's included in your draft ordinance.
Shannon, I have one thing to add to that. I apologize. I just noticed this when the beginning was starting. The ordinance in your agenda packet only refers to 168-31, which is voluntary, this petition for voluntary annexation, which this was. But it's also a satellite, so there's a couple of extra findings that the council needs to make as it adopts this that are in a different statute, 168-58.2. Let me just review it real briefly, but I'll remind you when we get to a motion to include this as part of the ordinance, that the area describing the petition meets all the standards set out for satellite annexation. You're being told that it does. The petition bears the signature of all the owners, and that's been certified to you. The petition's otherwise valid. Again, your administration's telling you all those things are true, and then the public health, safety, and welfare inhabitants of the town, the proposed area, will be best served by annexation. So, you do have to have a little additional finding for a satellite that will need to get into the ordinance.
Okay, anybody have any further questions or comments for Shannon? Okay, it's 5:40. I'll open this public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Morning, Mayor. Counsel.
Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Brian Golden. I'm an attorney with the Van Winkle Law Firm in Asheville. I represent the applicant in this annexation petition. And thank you, Mr. Henning, for bringing up 168-58.2. There were some provisions in 168-58.1 and 0.2 that I was going to address, namely, the health, safety, and welfare. As Mr. Henning said, one of the considerations that this board has to take in a satellite annexation, that is, an annexation of a piece of property that's not contiguous to the corporate limits, is that health, safety, and welfare. And what I would say, as it relates to the health, safety, and welfare, is when you consider what that property, where it is, and what it's already zoned. It is regulated planning-wise by Buckham County. It's open use. I looked right before I came here. In the open use district of Buckham County, you can do every one of the listed uses allowed in Buckham County, with the exception of two. And one of them was aviation, and we all know we're not going to be landing planes there. And so, by bringing it in to the corporate limits, there are fewer uses to which the property can be used or can be put, and it would have to comply with all of your new development regulations under your new zoning ordinance that were just recently adopted in December of 2022, I believe it was. And so, all of those together would assist and help and benefit the town residents. And not only that, we just heard a budget presentation, and so your revenues, bringing that in, revenues would be generated on that property for property tax. And so, that, again, helps with the health, safety, and welfare, right? There'll be an increased police protection. The town's indicating that that's one of the services that they're able to provide out there. But the amount of revenue generated helps to fray that cost. And so, when we're talking about health, safety, and welfare, I would ask the board to make that consideration and approve the ordinance based upon the benefit to the town in increased revenue. And I would further indicate that under your comprehensive land use plan, one of the specific recommended, identified goals was to continue to effectively use annexation for growth, management, and tax-based enhancement. And so, I think that that is an excellent, that is a checkmark for the town, if this annexation goes through, that you have effectively used annexation to enhance the town and secure the health, safety, and welfare of those that reside in the town and the property owners. So, we would ask for a favorable approval of the annexation ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir, if you could come up and identify yourself.
Mayor.
Hey, how's it going, council members? My name is Kevin Mattson. I live at 160 Monday Cove Road. My wife, Ryan, and I, she was open to make it tonight as well, wanted to speak against the approval of this particular annexation. And if you'll give me a few moments to do so, I'll try and not get too nervous talking up here to y'all. I come from the emergency services background, actually, Mr. V. Hahn's former realm in emergency services in North Carolina, and my wife's an urban planner. Did planning for many, many years as well. Understand the point that was just proven, revenue generation, the key things you want to hear when it comes to annexation. For the individuals that live on Monday Cove Road, the increased traffic, the damages to the state-maintained road from heavy equipment coming through, the one point of ingress and egress that exists for where I live, which is uphill from that particular property's entrance site, all of those come into play when we look at considerations from that perspective. If there was a landslide or flooding from the additional impervious services that are going to be included with the roadway and the access, all the residents that are down slope that live on Monday Cove, which are in the unincorporated areas, are going to be at risk from this development, not to mention the noise pollution and, of course, the nature that we all love so close to the Blue Ridge Parkway. So, the large number of activity that will be involved with this development, the risk for flooding, the risk for landslides, in what is a high-risk area, if you look at the Buckham County GIS maps, for high-risk and moderate risk, I'm not even sure, and this is speculation only, if it would even pass the Buckham County Planning Board. I would probably go seek information from them as far as if they've reviewed this property before as well. So, if anything, we're not saying don't develop, but we're just saying invest more time and research in that standpoint. And as residents from that road, unfortunately, we're not Town of Woodfin residents, but from residents that live on Monday Cove Road, we do have concern, shared concern amongst many of us, many of folks that have lived there since the 1950s, generational families in that community, that this will have an adverse impact on our health and life safety as well. And hopefully, I stay within the limits of the time for that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, hearing, no comments. I'll close this public hearing at 5:46 PM. And with that, do we have a motion regarding this public hearing? And I'll ask our attorney to repeat one more time what you.
Yes, sir. So, I think the suggested motion that you have, to this suggested motion, I think you need to add, moving that you approved the requested voluntary annexation as described up here is fine. I think it needs to say, as described in Exhibit A, the boundary survey is legally described in proposed draft ordinance, and that the findings required by 168-58.2 are incorporated into the ordinance. I think that'll get you where you need to be. Now, with the understanding that, again, that's about the standards for satellite annexation being met, and that's been certified to you, that the owners have signed, and that also is certified, petition's otherwise valid, and then that crucial one, that the public health, safety, and welfare is being served by the annexation. So, again, I want you to understand why you're incorporating those findings into this. But I think you can do that by a motion that says this, plus with the addition of the standards of 168-58.2.
Is it appropriate to ask a question at this point? My question is, is what kind of access is intended from Monday Cove as far as is construction? And I have remembered additional.
So, the next application looks at the actual development proposal. So, this is just looking at annexation. So, right now, all we can, all we can say as it relates to this is that there is public road access at two locations. One is Elk Mountain Scenic Highway.
Which is what I was mostly familiar with. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone wish to make a motion regarding this proposal?
I will. I move to approve the requested voluntary annexation for 96.15 acres located off Elk Mountain Scenic Highway and Monday Cove Road, as described in Exhibit A, boundary survey, and as legally described in the proposed draft ordinance, and find that, one, the area described in the petition meets all of the standards set forth in North Carolina General Statute 168-58.1B. Two, the petition bears the signatures of all the owners of the real property within the area proposed for annexation. Three, the petition is otherwise valid. And four, the public health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the Town of Woodfin and the proposed area of annexation will be best served by the annexation.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. It's in discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, the next item is a public hearing regarding the same.
Same tract of land.
However, this has to do with zoning, I presume, so.
It does, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, this one actually is 197.
So this one actually is 197.4 acres. Excuse me, I got a frog in my throat. So this is a conditional zoning review for 197.4 acres that's located off of Monday Cove Road to the north, and also abutting Elk Mountain Scenic Highway on the south. So the map looks familiar. The purple area is already within the town limits. That's an R43 conditional zone. That's the Sourwood Inn tract, that we'll call it. And then the three parcels to the north, you just voted to annex, are currently open use with Buncombe County, and they stretch all the way to the north here toward Monday Cove Road. That's kind of that gray hatched area here, the top center. So again, aerial view, as you can see, kind of, again, Elk Mountain Scenic Highway is on the bottom of the screen. Monday Cove is the very top center. You can see it's kind of mountainous, wooded, forested, and there's some small farms there to the upper right of the screen along Monday Cove Road. We'll get into the site plan here in just a minute, but some takeaways from that is there is the existing 14-unit lodge, the Sourwood Inn. They're planning to add 64 guest cabins on the site. There's an existing restaurant that will remain, and we call it a retail services building. They call it more of a rival center for guests that are staying there or stay at the day's spa center. There will be an event pavilion of about 2,400 square feet. There are 24 spa treatment rooms that are scattered, and I'll show you that here in a minute. Of note, retaining walls, steep slope zone limits the height of one or combined retaining walls to 12 feet. They're asking for up to 24 feet in a couple places for fire truck turnarounds, and we'll show those to you as well. They're anticipating only needing 114, excuse me, 115 parking spaces because they're more of a destination, and so that's a 20% reduction. The residential side of the development, which is more geared to this annexed area, is 36 houses at 280 use. Eight of those, I've got short-term rental, there's some updated conditions, I'll say, and six guest houses that are lodging. So I know that's a lot of kind of highlights to a plan, but it is 197 acres. Excuse me here. So orientation-wise, again, to the left is actually north. That's Monday Cove Road to the left. To the right is Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. So I notice the cursor is small here in that upper right, excuse me, top right, that's the Sourwood Inn that's already existing. And then the cabins, those spas and cabins are kind of scattered along older logging roads here in the center of the Sourwood site. We talked about 36 residential home sites. That's in this Monday Cove tract along the ridge. And then these small black stars are the lodging houses, the houses that are either a guest house or available for short-term rental. I'm going to zoom in here. So a little bit closer look at the Sourwood tract. Again, parking, maneuvering area, you've got those day spa modules here with the pools, the existing inn. Just to tell you, those round dotted circles there, that is protected whale-headed areas. So there are, so far out, they're on individual or community whales. So you see there's kind of a whale, a couple of those circles. There's some different dashed areas you'll see here as well. You're like, what are those? Those are what they're proposing to be, the onsite septic system. They're proposing to use subsurface drip irrigation, so SSDIs. When you see SSDI, I've already told you more than I know about it, but it's subsurface drip irrigation. It's a more advanced treatment system than what your typical, cut all the trees down, put in a tank, you got tail lines. That's what we normally see. This one's a little bit more environmentally sensitive in the amount of tree or ground cover needing to be removed. Hence, it's in that green area on this map, the kind of lighter tan, that's your areas that are either already disturbed or plan to be disturbed. White dashed lines that are existing kind of cart paths that will be used to access the scattered cabins and day spa. So the kind of western half of the Sourwood Inn, you can kind of see more of these hotel cabins here. It's small script, I know, but that is pointing at these cabins are kind of like in a duplex style. These are looking kind of to the east, northeast, but that is looking off the hill downhill. Again, some more pools, more massage treatment areas in the center. Your exhibit or event center is here. You'll notice that is closer to the exit back out to Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. Just for your information, this area to the west or to the bottom of the screen, that is the Weaverville watershed. So that is protected, owned by the town of Weaverville, not for development, not for public access. Their road will be close to that property line, and we'll get to another condition or modification. Guest houses are in this area. And then we'll move over here to houses, picking back up. You've got some single-family home sites with the option to short-term rental. And then the balance of these boxes here are homes sites that are not intended for short-term, so long-term, which means at least one month tenancy. Retaining walls, you're like, where are the retaining walls at? Most of the retaining walls, you barely can make it up, but that's that solid black line that parallels the road, that's a retaining wall. Most of them run about six to eight feet tall. There's just one wall complies with our standards in steep slope for the town. These fire truck turnarounds, when you're more than 150 feet of road or a drive, you need a fire truck turnaround per the Fire Marshal Fire Code. That's the areas where we have two walls that are stacked up to 12 feet tall. So they're like 10 and a 10 or a 12 and a 12. As you see, they're kind of interior to the site. There's another one in this area, another one here along the western. Not to belabor it, but there's three or four scattered where they're stacked. But if anything, they're not infringing or looming over an adjacent property, they're kind of internal to the site. So any impact or negative externality would be part of this development. This is the northern end of the project, so Monday Cove Road, that is it here on the very far left. They're planning to put a gate in, in the approximate area toward the discharge point Monday Cove, as well as on Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. Reims Creek Volunteer Fire Department asked that it be at least sirens activated so that they will be able to, you know, if they get a call, it will shorten their travel distance between the Monday Cove, Reims Creek Valley, and Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. When you drive around, it's at least 15 minutes around from the Sourwood side to the Monday Cove side. It was at least a 15-minute drive when I drove around by the Parkway to post signs. Again, there's some more of these subsurface drip irrigation areas, just pointing those out, more whaleheads, existing stream, and the roads are kind of following the valley. I'll stop right here for a minute. Do y'all have any questions about the site plan before we talk about modifications? There's a lot. It's something me and Shannon stared at for a couple months, so... Okay. First off, it's like, why is it CS2? Just to point out, CS2, community shopping, does not allow for residential uses. So CS2 does. And since we're going there, since we've got a mixed-use environment, where we've got some lodging, we've got some cabins, some spa services and residential, CS2 was the most logical zoning district to go with. As part of the CZ requirement, you're required to have sidewalks. As you're familiar with, Monday Cove and Elk Mountain Scenic Highway, they do not have sidewalks anywhere near here. The applicant is providing, I'll go back up here, all those red lines are walking trails or trails that connect uses on the property. So in lieu of sidewalks in the rural areas, they're connecting uses either with the low-speed vehicle trails or logging roads or these walking trails. So you'll be able to get from one place to the other without actually having to get in your car if you're staying there. Again, mentioned the parking from 145 to 115 spaces, that's about 20% less. Steep slope zone does not allow but one principal building on a property. Since it's kind of a larger tract with multiple principal uses, that's a modification. You've got clearly the hotel, you've got the event building, you've got all those residential uses, that's a modification. The retaining wall heights at the 24 feet. And then that reduction in the required screening yard along the western property boundary. I had mentioned, again, the Weaverville watershed. We consider open use to be more of a residential district from our perspective. So the town does require screening between commercially-zoned properties with commercial development and residential-zoned property. CS2, open use. So we would require a 15-foot screening yard. This existing road alignment is right below the ridge crest, and so one of the modifications is, instead of grading further and moving everything down the steeper slope to the east, they would like to keep it in place and just use the existing vegetation that's between their road and Weaverville's preserved property. I mean, there's an easement on the property. So that is just one thing to note, is that that one area wouldn't have that 15 feet. It may be five feet, it may be eight feet in places. But it is government-owned property that is not planned to be developed. Any questions about the modifications at this point? I know, I'm just trying to move slow, sorry if it's too many pauses. The planning board did meet earlier in May. I can't believe it's only been two weeks, but May 2nd, we met. They did vote for the proposed conditional zoning, three to zero. Most of that was surrounding, or most of the discussion was surrounding the management of short-term rentals. I think there was some concerns that having six or eight different property owners, things might could spiral out of control. The applicant can speak to that further, but they have worked with their attorney and their site designer, and they've come up with, I believe, a solution on how to address concerns about, you know, 10 or 12 different parties owning property and renting out on whatever platform that may be. And so we have an updated Exhibit D. I think Mrs. Tuck sent that out earlier today by email. You also have, I think, Shannon, we did get them right, I don't know if I printed it out right, the hard copy Exhibit D. Do I need... Okay, I've got it, I've got it sitting in your office. Let me run it, go get it for them. Yeah, I laid it on your table. That's okay. We've been running, posting signs today. We, I did print out, forgot to shake it, Shannon. One is the clear clean markup or the clean version, Exhibit D, as you would read it. And then we have one that has the strikeouts that shows you the changes from the planning board meeting until tonight. So there's that. Anyway, we'll roll through those amended conditions here. So on the screen, you can see what was originally the black text, that stays. The blue underline is new, and then there's the struck out. Basically, this one says here is that the property owner, I'm not going to pronounce the name of the LLC because I won't pronounce it correctly, will be basically managing all of those guest houses and any STVRs, individual-owned homes. So they'll basically, there'll be one entity. Sorry, Shannon, that I didn't say that. Come back. So this is Condition 3. Condition 4 was updated. This one basically clarified that the roads that will be all privately maintained, so the town is not going to take on maintenance or snow clearing, snow removal of that. Also, they're gated at the three entrances, so we typically do not take on responsibility for gated communities. I don't want to move too quick, it's all trouble. We would say...
Did you say this is a gated?
Well, it's gated each end because it's more of a private development, because it's the hotel, lodging, wellness retreat. And then that northern portion, there's like 30 houses that are for ownership are behind that gate.
Okay, so, help me. Is this gate going around the entire property then?
I...
Or just the entrance and exit?
Just the entrances.
Yeah, just entrances.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's like fenced. I'm sorry when I said gated, I just meant across the road.
It's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important for the board that some members may not realize that the emergency gate system is welched. Most of the emergency vehicles have to open the gates in case of an emergency. They don't have to have somebody on call or a special number or something.
Yeah.
And with the project as size, I'm sure that it's going to call for a soil scientist for the septic system because of the amount of gallons per day.
Yeah, they did, in the packet of information, the more detailed board packet, there is a soil analysis. So they've had some preliminary site evaluations of where the well should go and where the SSDI system should go, and it's kind of a color-coded map. And if you want us to go to that, we can pull that up from the board packet and look at that if that's something of interest. But they did work with the Fire Marshal's Office about the road widths, the approach angles, and about having that sirens activated gate so that, like you said, there's not somebody you have to physically call to have them come get that gate open, that delay, so that...
Chief could tell us more about it. Isn't that called a welched system?
Depends on what it's called, but sirens activated, well...
Well, yeah, I said well, I mean, yeah, okay.
It depends on, you know, the system, but we just call it sirens activated.
Right, right.
And so, I mean, one thing with the gate, right, wrong, different, it does kind of like any casual cut-through traffic, won't be driving through, it'll be people either living there or and/or the emergency services will have access. So any other questions? Did I answer yours?
Yes, you did.
Okay, I want to make sure I got both of you. Condition number seven, we want, we clarified, or they clarified for us, that the grading limit is at 13%. So our steep slope is 15%. So this is actually a little bit below what we will allow. They're agreeing to 13%. The drip irrigation system will kind of weave around trees, want to understand. So that is not actually, that's not actually part of the 13%. So there may be some small underbrush, but any trees over six inches would be affected. What you see on the plan is actually 12.6. So there's a little bit, there's a little bit of buffer if there's something they run into out in the field. Number eight, kind of mentioned about trees. We clarified that trees larger than six inches are basically what we're worried about, and if they're selective removal. And then it'll just replant. Number 10, we just added concrete as one of the optional materials. And again, let me know if I'm moving too fast. I don't, this is a big one. And just clarified here that it was 32 residential home sites. There's just some language with state law when you say explicitly "single family" or something, it could technically expire out, but they're just clarifying 32 residential home sites. And then to clarify, under our lighting ordinance, it's kind of showing its age, as we've mentioned before, you'll hear that in our next public hearing. We just want to make sure it's a dark sky. Sometimes it's hard to find full cutoff fixtures, especially for residential, single-family, it's really hard to find that product. Dark sky, I think, kind of meets the intent. So it just clarifies that... Dark sky, I think, kind of meets the intent, so it just clarifies that they'll be finding more off-the-shelf fixtures. And then I believe we get it down, this is a new one, that they're already, like Mrs. Tuck mentioned, in the annexation, a large portion of that would be serviced by a commercial hauler, being the hotel, the wellness part of that retreat, since they're already getting that service, they agreed to go ahead and just having the trash recycling picked up for the 30-some individual houses. So in this case, the town just be providing police protection as opposed to trash as And then we do have a suggested motion here, the four dots up there are for the next slide, I'll show you real quick, spoiler alert, that is your comprehensive plan points. So that's the staff side of that, I know it's a lot, we do have, I do have the attorney, Mr. Golden, and we have Mr. Dahl, that is the landscape architect we've been working with, as well as the development team. So any other questions of staff, and I will let them speak.
Perfect. And I won't be long, at this point, I'll probably come back up and talk again, I guess. As an attorney, Brian Golden, again, we like to hear ourselves talk, although we don't say a lot when we do. But we do have the development team here, so Rob Dahl, landscape architect, John Kennard, the project engineer, Samir Levani, he is the owner and pro, or the owner and the developer. And so instead of listening to me regurgitate some of what was already said, I would just invite the team, and Samir, if you want to come up and introduce the project and tell them your overall idea of what you're gonna do, that'd be great, and then we can just bring everyone else up.
Hello, City Council, thanks for having us. We've got, let Mateusz speak, he's, you know, really kind of the lead from the vision of what we're trying to do here, so he'll be able to communicate that much better. I'm a little bit more of the backend, talking with, you know, Brian, trying to make sure everything is going well, so let Mateusz talk.
He's the brains of that. So first of all, I'd really say thank you so much for the consideration for this project. We've fallen in love with this land and the values that exist in this area, when it comes to connectivity, the disturbance. When we talk to our broker, our land planner, the fact that everyone values view sheds and quietness and the sound of the stream, like we spend so much time thinking, how do you actually preserve those particular sounds, the natural environment? So we're really excited about having a residential area and a, and a healing property where people can come to learn to breathe, learn to eat, connect back with nature, eat fresh food, and so we're just, you know, really excited about the project and grateful for your, for consideration, so thank you.
Rob will give more details on the project as he uses more technical.
He was just, man, we're pulling up some packet here. Yeah, yeah, I will, I just want to let it load first before, everybody watch us make sausage over here. Where am I hitting it, where am I missing?
The computer doesn't like to change screens. It's a little tricky, doesn't like it.
Got it on my end.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, my name is Rob Dahl, I'm a landscape architect here in Asheville at Find the Line Studios. As Brian mentioned, we have quite the design team on this one. We have Olson Kuntig International Architects out of Seattle, Washington. We have local architects, we have an architecture firm out of Boston, Texas that's consulting on it. In addition, we have Walker Ferguson from Land Resource Management, was the soil scientist that did all the preliminary site study, soil testing for us for septic suitability, and also Joel Link from Quibble Engineering did all of our stream and wetland jurisdiction work. So we started on this, gosh, what, a year ago probably, getting close to that, with them and their vision, and I think sort of, he, hearing sort of like, you know, what, what the, what the overall idea is from them directly, to me in the beginning just said, okay, this is not like the Grove Park, this is a very different sort of health and wellness spa retreat center. And to me, that was real exciting to hear, that like, what makes this project work for them, and special for them is that it is, it's quiet, it's contemplative, it's nature-based. So to go in with a real heavy hand, from a site planning standpoint, was basically going to ruin the whole purpose of the mission of the project. So these are some images that I think Olson Kuntig helped us put together, that just gives you sort of the look and feel of what this thing is meant to be. And I think that that helps, especially if you're not great at reading lots of two-dimensional technical drawings, that it just gives you the feeling that they're after. So this was sort of arrival experience, and I'll be happy to go back into the site plan and speak about any of these individual areas that you'd like to. Oh, there it goes, yep. So accommodations, you know, nice natural materials, very low disturbance around it. The idea of these rooms basically projecting you into nature, into the trees for that immersive experience. So this was accommodations, lodging, you know, this is a very, we like to say high vibe, not high class, type of an experience. So this would be all of the hotel accommodations. This is potential on sort of experience, events, dining, like, like Mateusz was saying, sort of the farm-to-table approach, healthy eating. And this was some sort of look and feel for the spa treatment. So they, they practice Ayurvedic medicine, and it has very specific, again, this is not like get a massage and a pedicure, kind of a health and wellness visit, it's much more deeply rooted in real medical science, which I think will also be pretty incredible addition to the whole western North Carolina region. So, let me just take a step back, so you've heard a lot of technical jargon, is there any just general questions that I can begin to address? I'm happy to run through, you know, we have aerial 3D modeling, we have blowups of all the different areas, but more just sort of like, are there any high-level questions that I can start with?
How visible would the extended walls, the turnarounds be? How, how-
So they're actually in these drawings, which I think goes to show that you're not gonna see them.
If you can't find them.
Right. So these, this model was, was done off, you know, real topography and real structure heights, real structure sizes. It's a, it's a full 3D model of the rendered site plan. And it was, you know, like, we were talking about, we met with Kevin Tipton, again, he was like one of the first meetings we had when we talked about this project, because we knew fire access was gonna be a major point, they already struggled, I mean, you guys know this hour would end burned originally, so that's not the place you want to start when you're talking about a new, a new project there. So met with him, wanted to get real comfortable with what they wanted to see in terms of improvements and road standards, road widths, those kind of things, which is also how we sort of then came into this idea of the deconstructed spa. So instead of the Grove Park in one big building, we have all the elements of a typical spa, and then it's broken out into pieces on the site. So we were able to reuse, you know, outside of a small section of the road that connects Elk Mountain to Monday Cove, we're reusing all existing road beds, so we're not going in bulldozing brand-new roads. We were real happy that Kevin was willing to work with us to be able to use logging roads to do, because we gotta get construction access in there, but then sort of deconstruct those roads back to being more cart path, bike path friendly, so that we don't have a huge road network inside there. So that really, like, if, if we were to try to do this and have to build all new roads, there would be no way to do it within your new steep slope ordinance.
What, excuse me, what's your peak elevation here?
The peak at the top's like 38 up at Elk Mountain, cause I think Buzzard Rock's a little bit higher, I think it's almost at 4. So it would be somewhere in that, in that range. Anything else? I mean, I think everybody's had a fair amount of time to see, and I was able to meet with some of you individually to talk about this one early on, so again, I'm here at your disposal. If not, then we can always get back up here, if questions come up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess we're ready for the hearing. If there's anything else at 6:21, I will open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? Yes, sir. Come up and introduce yourself again.
Yeah, I was gonna say something, so, I'll wait till we get number nine, so. Okay, yeah, I don't want to be in the way there. Once again, Kevin Mattson, 160 Monday Cove Road. It looks like a beautiful property, I'm not saying that at all, my concern still lies with the annexed portion on Monday Cove Road and the residential development. That road right now, if you've been up there and driven to the access off Monday Cove Road, it is a gravel road, it is not very wide. For emergency vehicles to go on there, it's gonna be an impervious surface, that's 18 to 20 feet minimum wide for an engine and ambulance to get up there. I don't know if residential traffic's gonna come through that gate as well, but the road's already crumbling at that spot, and we have stormwater issues. It's already flooding, DOT has been out multiple times to look at it. We have livestock and farms that are downriver from that blue line as well, and downslope from that new impervious surface, based on the model rendering. So once again, my concern, my advocating for, against that parcel is really due to the impacts on the residential side. I heard what Ricky said in regards to the steep slope ordinance, I know this is a new ordinance for y'all, setting a precedence here that is gonna be looked at in the future, I think is very important. I think it's something that, in this particular situation, there are impacts in an adverse capacity to those that live on Monday Cove Road, and I'm speaking for those and as a resident that is uphill from that access point. If there is a slide, if the road does go, we then lose access to our home as well, and emergency services to get up to that spot also. Once again, property as a whole, no concerns, we do recommend from our request that y'all do put some more consideration to the impacts to Monday Cove on that residential perspective, and that's all I've got for y'all, thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I just want to add one other thing, and I'm, I'm sorry I didn't jump up before I wanted everybody else to get out.
The, in speaking with some of you, one of the council members asked about electric charging stations, and so it's, it's likely some of the developers have electric vehicles themselves, and so at a central location on the developed site, there is likely to be several electric vehicle charging stations, which is a, which is a positive, it's a good for, for the environment, I mean, there's an argument either way, but it's good for the environment, it's, it's good for the, it's good for the town. I do think when, when this board looks at 160D 605 as for the, the consistency with the comprehensive plan and the reasonable statement, again, some of your goals for your strategies in the comprehensive plan were to improve the overall quality of new developments, I think from the presentation that Rob gave, you can see that it's going to be a very high-quality development, I can't remember how we said what it was gonna be, but I think it's going to be a high-quality. It provides pedestrian pathways throughout the town, which is another goal and strategy to reduce vehicular transportation, does increase businesses in Woodfin, which encourages or which accomplishes the strategy of economic development. And it does, which I think is important, it does have a preservation of environmental resources in that, as opposed to limiting grading to 15% of the site, we've voluntarily said we'll limit it to 13%. And so there is a significant reduction, 2% is a pretty big chunk of land, where we're gonna limit grading, we've also indicated that if we do have to take down trees in the area outside the limit of disturbance for the installation of any new infrastructure, that we'll replant those trees that are six inches or greater with an equal amount of trees. So if you lose one at six inches, we're gonna replace it with three two-inches or two three-inch trees outside of those limits of disturbance. And so we are trying to do, we as a developer and property owner, trying to do their best to provide for the preservation of the environmental resources, which then also goes to the, that subsurface drip irrigation system, where we can work in and around all of the environments and up and down the topography. So we would ask for, again, a favorable approval or a favorable vote on the ordinance, considering its consistency with the comprehensive plan and the reasonableness of the development.
Brian, can you, just before you go down, can you just speak to the hypothetical of if your clients were to damage a DOT road, what their responsibility would be in that instance?
So Department of Transportation regulates, I think, Monday Cove and Elk Mountain Scenic Highway, and so if there is traffic that's coming in and out, heavy equipment traffic that's coming in and out, the burden's going to be on us for getting a recommendation from the Department of Transportation to determine what we need to do to repair the road to the quality that was in before the development. And so if the apron that we have damages the edge of that road bed, we don't get to decide what, what it is we want to fix, I think the Department of Transportation through its engineers will say, this is how it needs to be fixed. If we have to make any road cuts, for whatever reason, the Department of Transportation gives us approval for that, right? They give us driveway permits, road cuts, they tell us to the quality and the standard that we have to do, that's all a burden or an obligation on the owner of the property throughout the development process. Internally, all the roads are gonna be private roads, we're not looking for the town to do, to help us take over those roads, maintain those roads. The gates, it's not an entirely gated community, it's not like goes all around the 197 acres, it is just to prevent anyone from using that as a cut-through from Elk Mountain to Monday Cove, right? Instead of taking the 15 minutes all the way around, we don't want my 16-year-old son driving his hot rod through there and destroying the tranquility of not only that setting, but the, the folks that live in and around that area. I don't have a 16-year-old son with a hot rod, but you all understand. And, and so, yeah, that is it. So we've got those limits on gradings, we've got the replanting of the trees, if any non-invasive species, the town has given us permission to remove any non, or invasive species, but any non-invasive species outside the limits of disturbance that are greater than six acres, we're gonna replant those trees. The, the short-term rental, I know Ricky had talked about short-term rental, and now I'm going on and on, and I apologize, and it's not, we, we didn't know what else to call it. Those houses that we were looking at, the four, the six four-bedroom guest houses and the potential for the other residential home sites, they would be part of the hospitality. So imagine if you were going somewhere and the main lodge didn't have enough rooms, those other are overflow rooms, anything that's going to be managed as part of the hospitality is gonna be managed by the folks that are managing the lodge. So it's not your typical me and my fraternity brothers going out there and partying at the lodge. Why? Because we'll have to go through the vetting process of the developer, the management entity for the lodge, to get approval to stay at any one of those lodging facilities. We call them short-term rentals, everybody, nobody likes that term, but if you- Everybody, nobody likes that term, but if you wipe that off, you know, it's, it's a new beginning. If you wipe that off, they're really just overflow rooms for the hospitality division, managed by the hospitality division. And that was a condition that we worked at length with Shannon and Ricky, trying to get that together, like, alright, so we've got these, we're gonna manage them. It's not like Brian Golden is gonna go out, own one of these homes, and just throw it up on, um, Airbnb or vacation rental by owner. It's not gonna pop up on your, uh, whatever the proprietary site is that you use. It's not gonna pop up like that. It's gonna be part of the, um, entity. The other ones are gonna be private, are gonna be privately-owned homes. I could buy one of them, um, and live out there if I desired to do that. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do think that it does satisfy your comprehensive plan, satisfies a significant number of your goals and strategies, and under one sixty D six oh five, when you're looking at the reasonableness statement, um, I do think that there are significant benefits to the town. And so, we would ask for, again, an approval. Mr. Edgerton, if you have any other questions, or any other council members, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, backing up to the, the issue at one sixty Monday Cove Road and the, um, the concerns of this gentleman, will I dot see to it that his concerns are addressed?
So, if...
Or is that you?
Uh, and I understood his concerns to, to say that if there's a landslide, there's a possibility that the road, uh, could be covered by the landslide and they lose their access to the property. And see, the, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, uh, has governing control over that. And so, if there's anything that we do that causes damage to that road, the burden is on us to repair that damage. The Department of Transportation may go out there in an emergency situation and clean it up, likely the bill's coming to us. And so, if he's worried, uh, Mr., and I forgot.
It's, uh, Mattson.
Mattson, if, if Mr. Mattson has that concern about the, the landslides and, and being cut off, uh, I don't wanna diminish that concern, but we live in a steep slope area. Landslides do happen. The department, it's not that the Department of Transportation is causing it, but the Department of Transportation's going to be the governing entity that makes us do what we're supposed to do to open up that road and get access again. And so, I, I think, Mr. Mattson, if you're, if your concern is that, I think the care that we're taking in reducing the area, the graded areas, um, the development's not going to add to your steep slope concern because of the way that it follows the topography, the limited number of, uh, area that's being developed. The concern that, that you have is just a generalized concern of the area being in danger of a, of a steep slope. And we're gonna comply with the Town of Woodfin's ordinance, with the exception of a couple of those, uh, requests for deviations. And in light of that, we're reducing the amount of area that's gonna be graded.
May I be honking that was fine? Is that, is that...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it took me a while to check.
And so, and, and so, I don't know if that answered your question. I, I, I mean, I understood what his concern is.
Mm-hmm. I understand it too, and, um, I just wanted to, uh, shed some more light on that. I don't mean to be disparaging, um, to the DOT, but, uh, I've seen them make some really batty, uh, decisions, pardon me, and, uh, I just, uh, wanna make sure everyone's covered clearly this design, I think is, I can't think of anything that you all haven't thought of for an environmental standpoint. And, um, I, I think it's beautiful, and I like how thoughtful you are. Um, but I was glad, and I was glad to get the clarification that you may have to pay for the road repairs if there are any down the road.
And, and, and again, right, DOT is not going to say, DOT is in charge of that road. They're not gonna say, because you're using your development for that access. They could say that, and they do a lot of batty things, right? But there is a Supreme Court case out of North Carolina that came down a couple of years ago that said they can't require us to fix the roads that are too far removed. What they can do is require us to get a driveway permit, improve that area of the road where our apron comes out. But if they were to say, fix that blind curve three miles down the road, North Carolina Supreme Court says they don't have jurisdiction to do that. The limited number of, uh, properties that are gonna be there, I don't think they required a TIA for us, otherwise we would've had one, so the traffic count's not bad. The Department of Transportation therefore can't say, go out and fix these blind curves, go out and improve that edge of the road. If it's, if we make it worse, that's our duty. The Department of Transportation's gonna come and say, you gotta repair it to the quality and the condition that it was in prior to your development. But they, but unfortunately, right, that's fair.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair.
They do some crazy things. We unfortunately have to deal with them all the time on, on some of the developments that we go through. We have blind curves. As long as there's adequate site distance, the triangles are all good, um, the Department of Transportation will issue that driveway permit.
Okay. Do you, uh, do you anticipate being involved in this project forever, for how long, until it's finished being built?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I mean, there's going to be, they don't know it yet, but there's going to be a lot of reasons that they are going to need the assistance of, uh, an attorney, as well as all the design professionals that are here, the PE and the registered landscape architect, along with others. Sorry, guys. Um, so, yeah.
Just curious too, what is the expectation in the long run for entrances and exits? Will most of that come in off of Elk Mountain, or will they come in on Monday Cove?
Ricky, can you get the side panel?
It's equally in the middle of.
Yeah, so I think the majority of the access is gonna come in off of Elk Mountain because of the...
Okay.
So, Elk Mountain's to the right. Yeah, Elk Mountain's to the right. The, the, I guess the admission center...
No, that's, yeah, do it. Hop back up here. That's correct. So, we, we expected almost all of it to come off Elk Mountain because it's a much better experience getting from town or the airport to the Sowerwood Inn by going up Elk Mountain than it is to go all the way around up Reeds Creek and then back in that back entrance. It's really, i- i- and I think even, you know, the, like, if I had a home on the Monday Cove side, I would drive to and from my house through the road off Elk Mountain Scenic Highway because it is quicker and two, it's just, it's a better experience. And that's the way the project is designed, for that to be the entrance. That's where that arrival hub is located.
And that's the case with Sowerwood in the past. Okay.
The, the only people that could come in from Monday Cove would be if you own a home, so no guests would be allowed to enter through Monday Cove, because that's not, you know, kinda think of like Monday Cove as residential and Sowerwood as the resort spot.
And you can tell from the site plan, the resort portion of the property, which is south, you know, on the right-hand side of your screen.
Right.
It's not physically connected, but road-wise, it's not physically connected to the residential side.
That's correct.
Yeah, the mouse doesn't show.
Okay. You're right. Basically, the only connection is at the top along the Weaverville Boundary, and that's gated.
And that's gated, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, cool.
Gated so my son and his hot rod don't...
Okay.
Any other questions from the legal perspective, reasonableness statement, one sixty D? Anything else? Thank you for your time, uh, and I apologize that I took too much of it.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Pickler, and my wife and I reside at one twenty-one Monday Cove Road, just below, down there. And, um, I, I guess I, I really wanna thank everybody for asking questions about the access to Monday Cove Road. Uh, that was a concern of ours. Uh, with all of that addressed and answered so nicely, um, we offer our support for the project, and we think that this will be an excellent neighbor. Uh, the way that they're developing the land and, and, these are the kinda neighbors that you wanna have. So, I know my neighbor was not in favor of it, and, and I apologize if there's a...
Oh, you're kidding, Bruce.
Okay, good. But, uh, it's beautiful land, and it would be a beautiful project, and so we do support it. Very good. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, hearing no more comments, I'll close this public hearing at six forty P.M. Uh, in regard to this, do we have a motion?
We're, we're gonna call a just destination stop. And there'll be a second screening.
Oh, I'll make a motion in a second, but I, I did wanna say that, I think that the, to answer the, the questions that had been asked earlier about how this, how our, uh, steep subordinance compares to Buncombe Counties, we, we modeled ours pretty heavily on Buncombe Counties and then made some changes to make it more restrictive than what they have in the counties. So, we, we placed greater limitations on the ability to remove trees. Um, on top of that, Buncombe County has exceptions for communal roads. They allow you to go above even the eight percent, uh, impervious level for their steep slope zone, so we're getting, not only in the condition for this particular project, far less disturbance, we're also getting to a much lower level of impervious surface going forward. So, if, if this project was presented in the county, they'd be able to do a lot less than what they're doing here. And I, and I do think it's a, I think it's a great, great project. It is, um, it's about as low intensity a use as you would expect to see in that particular area, um, and so, I do think it meets all the conditions of our, of our comprehensive plan, so I'm happy to hear anyone else's thoughts, but I'm, I'll also make a motion if, if we're ready for that.
We're ready.
Okay. I move to approve the conditional zoning of one hundred and ninety-seven point four acres as shown on Exhibits A and B from Open Use and R forty-three CZ to Community Shopping Two CZ, subject to the Exhibit D project conditions and incorporating the changes to conditions three, four, seven, eight, ten, twelve, seventeen, and twenty-one, as shown in the previous slides, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Town of Woodfin Comprehensive Plan, and meets the development needs of the community, and that the request, one, encourages walking and promotes connectivity between uses within the development through an internal network of trails, two, supports new and existing businesses within Woodfin to advance and maintain environmentally and socially sustainable business practices that enhance community life, three, identifies appropriate locations for health and wellness businesses, and ensures that these locations are zoned appropriately and adequate infrastructure is available, four, encourages low-impact cluster development that preserves environmentally sensitive areas such as ridge tops, steep terrain, and areas adjacent to streams and creeks, and five, provides additional housing options with energy-efficient buildings.
That it? Okay, you heard the motion. We have a, have a second.
My second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, next public hearing.
Let's give everybody a moment just to move out here. Okay, this one's a lot closer into town than the last one. This is a conditional zoning request for about six and a half acres off of Reynolds Mountain Boulevard from what's Community Shopping now, again, to Community Shopping Two. Uh, same reason, we do not allow residential uses within Community Shopping, uh, so that's the CS Two. Uh, it's a CZ because of the size of the project being well over thirty thousand square feet. This is for a, a senior living facility, independent, I should say. So, here's the current zoning map. As you'll notice, uh, all that red-orange is Community Shopping. Our subject property there is in the center, uh, the hatched area. To the southeast or bottom right is a residential R ten, uh, which I believe is occupied by, I don't know, I guess, but I think that is actually either vacant or a congregate care facility, like a nursing home. Uh, there is residential R seven to the northwest, there's a couple, uh, mobile homes and single-family homes to the northwest. Keep in mind, this is a two thousand nineteen aerial, um, so you see the school, Reynolds Mountain, I think it's Christian Academy is to the right or east, and then that R ten you see is that kinda star-shaped building that I believe is a residential care facility, like a nursing home. Uh, our parcel in, subject parcel is in blue. Uh, just to note, why is that weird, uh, hand handle sticking out? It's some weird plating, uh, things that went on, me and Shannon scratched our head over that. They're gonna be dedicating that right-of-way, cleaning up that right-of-way, 'cause their property's literally underneath the roadbed that's publicly maintained, that we maintain. So, they're gonna clean that up as they move the project forward with plating. Uh, the hotel that's been in construction for about four years is immediately to the west here, so that's a four-story building. And then, just for, again, I hate when you can't see on here, but upper left of the blue box, you'll see an apartment complex and then a house in the upper left, that's that R seven area, and some mobile homes immediately to the north. So, the site plan, we was able to squeeze this one in on this screen. Uh, the building is in the very center, uh, Reynolds Mountain Boulevard is immediately to the south. Uh, it's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand square-foot building, it's four stories tall, it's one building. Uh, there is a garage to the far north. It's a hundred and fifty-two, uh, senior living units. It's a mixture of one and two bedrooms. There are indoor and outdoor common areas. Uh, we get a sidewalk on Reynolds Mountain Boulevard that they're gonna build for, so this'll be the first section of sidewalk for the public to use on this roadway. That's good news. Uh, we'll talk about retaining walls here in a minute, and then they're asking for a parking reduction to a hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces. Uh, applicant, she can tell you in great detail about their customer base, their users, um, are more in their seventies and eighties and have a less demand for vehicles. So, retaining walls, uh, let me go back to retaining walls here. Uh, retaining walls, uh, we are not steep slope here, so there is not technically a twelve-foot height limit on, uh, this, on these walls specifically, but just note that there are, on that right-hand side, there's two walls that stack up. Uh, they reach heights of up to like thirty-five hea-, thirty-five feet cumulatively when you add them together. They are below the school, so, and, and, so this is not like you're basically looking at that wall from the school angle looking west. Also, uh, we have a fairly law, excuse me, fairly tall wall on the west of about twenty-four feet that will be behind the hotel. Just want everybody to kinda be aware of that. Uh, the applicant is proposing to put some screening in front of the walls, some vegetation that may climb over the wall and hang down, that will fill in. We will not have that very large wall up against our right-of-way, so there is a shorter wall, but it would be compliant in any case, no matter what you look at. So, just wanna make sure, that's those two dark lines on the right and then the dark lines on the left, in case you see what's happening. So, as far as modifications go, Community Shopping does limit the height of buildings to thirty-five feet, so they're requesting, uh, up to fifty-five. It's fifty-four feet, six inches, so we rounded up to fifty-five. Uh, reduce the parking count from a hundred and eighty-eight to a hundred and thirty-eight spaces. Um, again, age of our lighting code says to use like high-pressure sodium, uh, they're asking to go to LED, it's, it's something, just the age of our lighting code. And, uh, one thing that did change from the planning board to now is that they were doing uplighting, that did change, where you now have a proposed, uh, LED downward lighting, so it's externally illuminated, uh, kind of a residential, residential-style, uh, ground-mounted sign that would be downlit with like some goosenecks or some arm brackets. So, I'm gonna stop there, 'cause we have Ms., Ms. Natski, right?
Nice.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna bring up her slideshow. She has a very good presentation, it was very good to hear it, uh, planning board. Let me just go up here to the slideshow and just come back to this. Just a second, this pull-up. I'll make a long period.
Why do you make this up?
Yes, we are, I'm telling you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, thank you for having us here, we're excited to be here and have an opportunity to be a part of your town. My name is Kristi, and I'm here on behalf of Hawthorne, and I'll tell you a little bit more about our company and who we are and what we do. Oops, did I skip one? I'm missing a slide, sorry about that. To start with, Hawthorne has a 30-year history of doing this kind of senior housing. The principles of the company started back in the early 1980s, and have continued to develop this kind of senior housing to this day. We are a development company, a construction company, as well as an operator, so we're a one-stop shop. We don't build it and sell it to some other operator, it's us from beginning to end. We currently have 12 buildings in operation in North Carolina, with our closest building to this town in Asheville. It's the Bella Vista Building off Tunnel Road, if you're familiar with our project. So as Ricky mentioned, this is our project site, we do have residential along the north, we also have a stream on that side of the property, and with the stream comes a 30-foot undisturbed buffer requirement, so that's really a great opportunity to have existing vegetation that remains in place, that serves as a buffer between our building and the residential development. On the other three sides, we're surrounded by either developed or vacant commercial land. The Emerald Bridge Rehabilitation Center is technically in the residential zone, as Ricky mentioned before, but it is a semi-commercial use. So, looking at our site plan, as Ricky mentioned, we have retaining walls, there is about 70 feet of grade separation from the western property line to the eastern property line. Our goal was to set the finished floor at an elevation where we were slightly above the hotel, but also below Reynolds Mountain Christian Academy, so that we were not impacting their views, and we also had a view over the hotel. The hotel is also a four-story building, which is what we're proposing here. When we are done being developed, there's still a tree line buffer that will block the view from Reynolds Christian Academy, however, our building has been designed that if they ever did future improvements or had multiple-story buildings, they would still have a view over the top of our building. We've also worked with our landscape architect to come up with some evergreen and seasonal landscaping to screen those retaining walls, even though they're not from the, visible from the public right-of-way, from the street frontage, we know that there will be some view as you drive up Reynolds Mountain Boulevard, looking past the hotel, so we've been really careful in our selection of vegetation to sort of screen that as well. These are a little out of order. So, our Hawthorne residents, so to tell you about who we serve, our target demographic is late 70s, early 80s. Our residents tend to be widows or widowers, they're currently living alone in their home and are looking for the kind of community environment that we offer. Generally, they already live in your community, they're already here, or their children are here, and they want to be closer to their family. Generally, they don't drive, I'll talk to you a little bit about the services we provide, but they pick this because they want to live in this kind of environment, not because they have a medical need that has sent them to assisted living or memory care, but because they're looking for a community and a supportive environment. So we offer private suites for all of our residents with a small kitchenette. The kitchenette has a 3/4 fridge and a small sink, but it doesn't have cooking facilities. We provide meals in a central dining room, so it gives residents a sense of independence, they can have their own coffee pot, they can have a toaster and some snacks, but really, the goal is to get them out of their private suite and into our community and interacting with other residents. We provide studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom options, and we provide weekly housekeeping and linen service. So as I mentioned, we serve three meals a day in a central dining room. We have trained chefs that manage each of our kitchens. We have centralized our, our cooking and our menu, because we know that good meals are really important for our residents. We also provide a private dining room that can be reserved if a resident has a birthday or has family who's visiting from out of town and they want to have a private event. We provide onsite management that's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and inside of the suites, there's a pull cord next to the bed, and also in the bathroom, that notifies the manager on duty in case a resident has an immediate need for assistance. We also provide a 15-passenger luxury van, and the van is used to take residents to doctor's appointments, shopping. We also have an onsite activities director who manages a constant stream of activities, which also includes outings, and they go out in the van. We've had activities such as senior proms and luos, all kinds of things. So about 30% of the building is shared common space for all residents. I know that the square footage of the building sounds big, but what we provide is almost a senior center inside of our building. We have an onsite beauty salon, we have a gym, a library, we've got game rooms and a pool table, and we really want to get our residents engaging with each other and engaging with our staff. Here's our movie theater, complete with a popcorn machine. And this is a bistro, what I love about this bistro is, this bistro has a stove and an oven, so if Grandma wants to bake cookies with her grandkids, they can come here and they have access to a full kitchen, and so they can do those kind of activities together. Our managers sometimes also prepare, you know, appetizers and things like that, and have gathering events there. We also have an ice cream machine that works all the time, and it's really popular with the gentlemen. Again, here are some of our activity areas, and what's unique about what we do is, this is a standard monthly rent, first and last month's rent, and it's all-inclusive, includes all of the services, all of the activities, the transportation, meals, everything is all-inclusive, included in one monthly fee. There's no big buy-in, you don't have to sell your house and give us all your money, it's just a standard monthly rent. We also have outside activity areas. We have an outdoor fire, on this particular building, we have an outdoor fire pit, we also have an outdoor kitchen, and we always do raised garden beds. Some of our buildings have outdoor structures and a swimming pool, we don't have a swimming pool on this one, I'm sorry. Some more gathering spaces. And then here's a picture of the architecture we've designed for this building. So, one of the things that we love about this area is, is the mountain feel, the topography, and we wanted to complement that and not compete with it, so we've chosen a natural color base, and you can see that we've broken up the building facade with lots of building articulation and a change in colors and materials. This is the view of the end of the building that will face Reynolds Mountain Boulevard. And then the project signs, so initially when we went to the planning board, we had asked to uplight the sign like we did at Bella Vista, that's sort of our standard monument sign. The lighting code, the way it's written right now, says that signs are supposed to be internally illuminated and not externally illuminated. In going through this with the planning board, we have modified the request to an LED-focused light that will actually be downlit from the top of the sign, and will focus directly on the sign itself. One of the things about the sign location as well is, it's on the uphill side of our entry, so we'll also have topography and landscaping behind it that will help screen any light bleed from the property behind us. So as we head to the end of my presentation and ask for your approval, just some key points. We're a low-impact use, we have no impact on the school system except by increasing your tax base. We're a quiet, low-impact use, very low traffic volumes, because our residents aren't on the roads, and we're providing van transportation, and we're a long-term neighbor who plans to be here for a long time. I'm available for any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Questions or comments?
I have a question about the price point.
Yes.
Is that information available?
It is, I would say, so looking at some of our...
Like with the studio and...
Yes, so looking at our prices right now in North Carolina, we range between $4,000 and $5,000 a month, depending on the size of the unit, so it varies a little bit.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, you've heard the information, at this time I'll open this public hearing at 7:00. Does anyone wish to speak? Have any comments from the public?
I have a question about the...
Mayor, council members, staff?
I have a question about the planting that you're going to do. The town has, I don't know that it's a formal requirement for using native plants. It was adopted with the idea in mind, applying to the parks and greenways in particular. I don't know that the town ever did anything else about expanding that requirement, but I think it's a good idea. So, you know, my question, that doesn't necessarily need to be answered by you right now, but is put out generally, is a hope that native plants are used instead of non-native invasive plants, and likewise in the raised beds, you know, to be pollinators, and, you know, a thoughtfulness in that direction. Thank you all.
Thank you for that.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing at 7:02, and with that in mind, do we have a motion regarding this public hearing?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve the conditional zoning of 6.58 acres as shown on Exhibits A and B, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Town of Woodfin comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community, in that the request, number one, promotes economic development by providing comparable infill development of undeveloped properties, sorry, it went away, properties within the town; two, increases the density around transportation corridors; three, promotes an urban style of development near a major commercial corridor; four, provide pedestrian paths throughout the town to allow residents to walk to work and services while increasing safe options for those wishing to walk for transportation or recreation; five, the site design encourages walking and promotes connectivity between parcels and development projects; a sidewalk connects the project to businesses and services; and six, adds to a range of housing options in the community supporting an underserved demographic.
Okay, you've heard the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Shannon, appointment of planning board members.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. So as the council's aware, the, sorry, we adopted, the town adopted an ordinance to create a merged planning board of adjustments, so that's merging our planning board with our board of adjustment. That was adopted last month, April 18th. At the time, we were considering appointments, but there was a request to defer for 30 days so that the town could advertise and provide an opportunity for outside applicants to apply, since this is a wholly new board, so we are sort of starting from scratch. We polled our existing planning board and board of adjustment members, of the 10 members, seven, yes, seven were willing to continue to serve, so they wanted to kind of throw their hats in the ring, and then we also received two outside applicants. Of the seven willing to continue, two were planning board members, and five were board of adjustment members. So, in these appointments, there's really three decision points that we have to consider. One is that this particular structure, the way it's designed, is that we would have a seven-member planning board of adjustment, but five of those members would perform a dual role. They would review and vote on both the legislative planning-related items, as well as the board of adjustment quasi-judicial items. The remaining two members would be planning board members and would vote on those planning items, and would serve as alternates to the board of adjustment, and because many of the decisions of the board of adjustment require a four-fifths or supermajority vote, having a full quorum, having five members present is very important. So this is a way to have enough members present, so even if we had one of the dual-role members absent, one of our alternates could sit in. Also, we hope that this is a way to kind of engage those alternates, it's always a chronic problem with boards of adjustment, that alternates don't get called to serve very often, and then they just sort of lose interest over time, and they don't attend all the same hearings or trainings, and so they're, when they are asked to serve, they're kind of caught off-guard and not as prepared as we would like them to be. So we think that this structure will serve us well. So we need to decide, or the council would need to decide, which five of the seven that get appointed, which five will serve in that dual role with those two remaining members to serve in the alternate role, and then we also need to decide who would serve one year versus three-year appointments. You want staggered terms on all of your boards and commissions so that you don't lose all of your members at one time and start from scratch, so you have some continuity and some experience to kind of help bring new members up to speed. So this is how I structured the motion, so the first five would be those members who would serve that dual role, and then you can decide which of those members should be three-year terms or one-year terms, and then same with the alternates, the planning board alternates. And with that, we shared the pool of applicants with the council ahead of the meeting, as included in the packets. If you have any questions about the process or anything else related to this board merger, I'd be happy to answer that, otherwise you're welcome to begin your discussion and decide who you'd like to appoint.
And just to complicate that further, because it's a very press on the line, I told you at your last meeting that there's some thought out there that the cleanest way to do this, because you do have authority to unconstitute the two boards you have, which is to say abolish them and reconstitute them to get a combined board, which your ordinance now creates. So that, I told you at the time, I'd get you a resolution that does that, I think is an initial step, adopting a resolution that just signifies, this is about not the ordinance structures, about the membership of those boards, and says you folks are no longer members of those two separate boards, and we're about to appoint a combined board, so...
Need to do that first.
I think it'd be...
Makes the most sense.
I think so.
Yes.
Well, I'll make the motion, maybe if that's okay, to abolish the existing planning board of adjustments and establish a combined planning board of adjustment and...
Pursuant the resolution.
Sir?
Pursuant...
Pursuant this resolution. Okay, you've heard the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we have no planning board, no board of adjustments. And I don't know if it's proper term or not, but I'd make the motion to take the staff's recommendation on the appointments. Okay, you've heard that motion, do you have a second?
Do we have a recommendation first?
No, I didn't actually present a recommendation, I think we had, I mean, I've talked with a number of you about, you know, the kind of balance that you're seeking, and so I think, you know, I would defer to one of you all to make a recommendation on the people that you were considering for the different positions.
Okay, well, we gotta, let's back up here just a second, we got a motion out there, so we need, if we're going to clarify something, you need to withdraw your motion. I'll withdraw that motion. Okay, now we're back to square one, you've got a...
I've got an idea, I don't know that I've actually put as much thought as I probably needed to into the three versus one years, so I think it's important to know that we could reappoint, and I just want to confirm this, we could reappoint someone, if we put them on one year...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, we don't have like a, we don't have like a one-term, okay, okay. Okay, okay. So we can reappoint anyone. Based on that, I've got an idea of who I would, who I'd recommend. And I'd just go in order with what you have on the screen, Shannon. So for the first name, it would be that slot there for three years and just- So mine would be Michael Bennett for slot one. He's the current board of adjustment chair. Stephanie Gosnell for slot two. Chris Deroni for slot three. Those are all current board of adjustment members. Glenda Overbeck for slot four. And Larry Hopkins for slot five. And then, someone's going to have to help me remember. I think Scott Hanson for six. And then Kennedy Young for seven. Or maybe vice versa, Chris for-
Or Scott.
Yeah. Sorry. So Scott for seven and then Kennedy for six. Because I understand that Kennedy's in one of the last years of college. So it might be, make more sense to have him for one. So I don't know if I need to restate that, Madam Clerk, or if that came through. But for the last two there, it would be Kennedy for six and Scott for seven.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One thing that I would ask is that that puts Stephanie and Glenda both in one-year terms. And I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate to have one of the two in a three-year term.
Okay. I would, so I think we've got them at two and four right now. So I'd move to swap.
I would consider maybe swapping Larry Hopkins with one, because Larry would be new to the board of adjustment.
Okay. So I think, I think I've got those two right next to each other at four and five. So why don't we just switch four and five? So Glenda's five and Larry's four.
I'll second that.
Okay. That's a friendly amendment to my motion. Friendly second from Ronnie.
Okay, you've heard the motion and the friendly amendment and the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And the friendly motion.
Yep. Okay, do we need to have a closed session?
A brief one, please.
Have a motion to adjourn this meeting, go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.